...meeting of October 6, 2022, to order a roll call, please.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Ames.
Here.
And Mayor, please.
Here. Did you call Alderman Jacob? Did I miss that one? Oh, okay. All right. Okay, Coram, present, please stand, join, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 1, 2022.
Second.
There are motion of second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next. Any citizens wish to be heard? I do have one, Mr. Shimonik. If you could please go to the podium.
Hello, everyone. I was here approximately three years ago to discuss the issue of water and coming from the north off Forest Glen to the south. There are four aldermen who were here at that time who provided pictures of the rainfall, what happened, and how much water would go through. Everybody said we'll do something. Well, nothing's been done, so I'm back again, and I could probably make a statement that I'll give to the mayor or someone, so each time that you guys have a meeting, we can read it until you do something. The water comes from 105 Forest Glen, runs from there to the south. We need to find out what the source is besides the rainwater, which seems to be in addition to more rainwater, or some other type of source. The other request that I have is that Forest Glen needs to have curbs and gutters. I don't know why you did the street and you didn't put in curbs and gutters. I don't know why you repaved it and you didn't put in curbs and gutters. Yes, you need a lift station. Yes, you need curbs and gutters. So those are my requests, and I greatly appreciate if you consider it. I haven't asked much of here after being here for 30 years, and I had hoped that we could find out a way to figure this problem out. Again, three years. I'll be happy to come back each meeting, say the same thing if you want me to. Hopefully, we can get to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to address the council? Okay, I have no written communications. Nothing on the mayor's report. Mr. Murmurs, manager's report.
Just one item tonight. We have a guest from DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, Beth Marquetti, who'd like to say a few words.
Manager, I think you're probably one of the only people that have actually pronounced my last name correctly, so thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I did have two hoteliers. I did have two hoteliers that had planned on joining me this evening. As you can imagine, I'll give you a little scenario real quickly. They're working the front desk. They're coming in at 4 o'clock in the morning to clean rooms. The staff has, the staffing is an issue, the supply chain is an issue. So I'm going to speak on their behalf for just a second and tell you both that, or tell from both of them, the Doubletree and the Courtyard, thank you for continuing to support and reinvest your hotel tax into tourism to promote overnight stays. So that was my one comment from them. So let's get started here. So thank you again. We do have a video that I'm gonna flip right through because we had a little technical difficulty. Hopefully, I flip right through. Do I need to point, Janelle? There we go. So we are your convention bureau in DuPage County. We represent 38 communities. I have been the executive director for about nine years, but I've been with the CBB since, do I have to say how long? Twenty, 2000. So I have a vast amount of experience in this, in this world. As you may know, we are funded by state hotel grants. So it's the state hotel tax. It's the tax on the visitors to the hotel. It's not on the residents. So this slide shows real quickly on the state level, we get a very small portion of the state hotel tax back. It's capped. We are DuPage County. We have over 16,000 hotel rooms. We're one of the largest metropolitan suburban areas of hotel rooms in the country. So we are capped, meaning that some of our money actually goes downstate to Peoria, Springfield, et cetera, et cetera. Surprise. Did I say that out loud? I did. And it has to be matched. It's a grant that has to be matched. So thank you to the many communities that support us, because without your support, we wouldn't be able to make the match. So 25% of one of the percentage points of occupancy from the city of Wood Dale is the municipal dues that's set by our board of directors. So again, thank you. We are also funded to make that match with a small contribution from the county in $50,000. And then we're a membership organization, so between all those three revenue streams, we do make our match. A couple of years ago, probably year 2018, 19, Senator Collerton had tried and tried to be able to allow non-home role communities to be able to use a portion of their hotel tax. So after many, many years of deliberation between some of our state associations, Wood Dale now has the opportunity to use 25% of their hotel tax as long as they are a member of the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I do want to say thank you. That was a hard fought battle and appreciate all that you've done for that. As I said before, we are 16,000 rooms strong. We're one of the largest in the metropolitan area. And we do have several non-certified convention bureaus in DuPage, so we want to work collectively as an entire region. Because tourism doesn't, tourists don't know what, one side of the road is a different city than another side, so. The following is a slide of all the communities that support us, so thank you. That's how we make our match. I'm not even touching this, and now it's moving. I'm sure most of you are aware, in 2010, there was a bill that passed into law that if you hopped in a yellow taxi cab, a city cab, and came out to Wood Dale, you, your guest was assessed a penalty. And that assessment went to Choose Chicago, their convention bureau, and Rosemont, on the backs of our visitors to the suburban market. This actually generated $6 million that Chicago used for incentives to book meetings. We responded. We tried to get into the bill. We weren't allowed. So we developed a grant program. My hotels know very much about this grant program, but I'm here tonight to talk about it for just a few minutes. So since we've started this grant program, to date, we have 120 grants that we've issued. It's only been about $300,000, so it's certainly not anywhere near $6 million. Room nights, 81,000, in addition to what we've already been able to book over the years, for an economic impact of over $78 million. So I'm going to give you an example of how this grant program works. One of our hotels here in Wood Dale is fighting for a piece of business, and they've given, you know, their free complimentary rooms to the, the meeting planner. They've offered some discounts. They've done a lot of different things to try to win that piece of business versus St. Louis Hotel. Well, they have, all they need to do is call us and fill out a grant application on our website, and maybe it's transportation from the airport that's going to make the difference for them, $2,000. So the bureau would put in $1,000, and we would call the municipality and say, hey, would you be willing to make the match? We now give that hotel $2,000 only after the group has come. So it's a no-risk grant situation, and it's really been successful for us. And I'm very happy to say that was on several of our village managers that came up with this program with me, so I want to thank them. So I'd really like to entertain that if the hotels do come to probably the village, the city manager, that we consider doing that for them, especially now that they're trying to really get back to recovery. So we have a marketing department. The marketing department's responsible for our social marketing, everything else that you see here. We worked very hard with the Alabrejas at a city of West Chicago, Cantini. So if you haven't seen that, you have about a month left to see this art. We helped, and Janelle's, they're in that room, we helped this organization write a grant that brought artists from Mexico City to create what looks like Coco, if you've ever seen the movie, these sculptures here. So that was really successful. Right now, Cantini expected over 400,000 visitors. We are also very involved in the Mackinich Arts Center at College of DuPage. We had the Frida Kahlo exhibit last year. We're expecting the Andy Warhol exhibit this coming June next year. I ran economic impact reports for those exhibits. Frida Kahlo generated about $10 million in economic impact, about 100,000 visitors, and you have to remember, we were still at the tail end of COVID last year. It was supposed to be in 2020, and then we had to move it to 2021, so this will be coming in 2023. Andy Warhol was from Pittsburgh. We will have over 90 pieces of his original art here in DuPage County. We also run a regional tourism campaign with our partners. So there's an example there of just some of the things that we've done. I know economic development, Choose DuPage will be doing a Northern Illinois partnership. This is kind of what we're doing but for tourism. So then we have a sales department, and our sales team really focuses on specialty markets for their own areas. So these are some of the trade shows that they attend. Our hotels are already working on local corporate business here, working, you know, making local negotiated rates with different businesses. They don't want us going from Itasca to Wood Dale to Rozelle. They want us going further out, so we, that's what we do. We are bringing business that they could not afford to do on their own. So a list of shows are here. We also started a sports commission in 2019. Obviously, we had to take a pause for a little bit, but we are up and running very strongly, and right now, we have over 59,000 hotel rooms on our books for sports. One of the things that I wanted to tell you from Lacey, who was with the Doubletree, we've got six pieces of sports business at that particular hotel. She's also working on two other pieces of business that have generated over 500 hotel rooms just in the last couple of weeks for 2023. So obviously, conventions, we work years out, '22, '23, '24, '25 even. So hopefully, you've all heard about the Women's Open that was at Addison at the Stardust Bowl. Believe it or not, we are one of the only bowling centers that has 84 consecutive lanes in the nation. So we were able to go after national tournaments such as Women's Open, which is the largest competitive women's sport in the country. Yes, bowling. So we wrapped up that in July. Quick facts, 10 million estimated economic impact. We had about, actually, I just ran the numbers. We had 11,520 competitors. Just to give you some stats there, on average, they stayed 3.3 days. Most of the people were either in a single room or a room of two people. There were some teams that stayed four to a room, but for the most part, they, they consumed a lot more rooms as well, so that was really great. And then we supported jobs. We always talk about tourism as a job creator and an economic driver. Most importantly, which you didn't get to see in my video, 2026 is going to be a very big year for all of us in Illinois and all of us in DuPage County. 2026 is the 100th anniversary of Route 66. Last night, I was with Mayor Grasso in Burr Ridge unveiling a Route 66 monument. There'll be a couple more in DuPage County, and then all along, Joliet, Bowling Brook, all the way down to Springfield, and then all the way down to Southern Illinois. In addition to Route 66 anniversary, we will be hosting the President's Cup here at Medina Country Club. So how many of you were around when Ryder Cup was here? 45,000 people per day to Medina. Hotel rooms completely booked throughout the entire Chicagoland area. So for those of you who aren't a golfer, such as myself, Ryder Cup is the United States versus Europe. President's Cup is the United States versus everyone else. So you have from South America to Korea, and actually, I just saw one of the Korean golfers who's someone to watch. So we went with the Medina delegation two weeks ago to Charlotte and worked with the Visit Charlotte Convention and Visitors Bureau. We actually met with Australia, who is hosting in 2028, I believe, and then St. Louis, who's hosting in 2030. And all of us were meeting with PGA Tour, am I getting too close, to talk about how we can really expand upon getting more and more international visitors here. So that was a really great one day for me. It was a very fast day, but we did want to meet with those folks. So mark your calendars for that September 2026 date, and I'm sure we'll be working collaboratively with many people in this room so that we can make sure that those visitors are stopping in your restaurants, in your shops, and staying in your hotels. So what do we do for Wood Dale? So here's just a few things in the last nine months that we've been able to accomplish. We've done a lot of videos because we knew that with COVID, people weren't doing as many site visits into the hotels, so we did a lot of virtual videos. So all of the hotels, the two here, have virtual videos that they can actually, it looks like real estate videos, Realtor videos, that you can walk in and see all the different meeting rooms. So those are called threshold. We, we track everything. Anytime we mention you, anytime we mention one of your restaurants or hotels or anything, we track all of that. So we can come back at any time into this room and tell you what has been able to be accomplished for the city of Wood Dale. Lots of social media posts. Boy, this is, sorry, it's a little tender right now. Go back. There we go. Oh, at the bottom, I would be murmurous if I didn't talk about that. Shoot, it's not going to go back now. We also really help a lot of the grant programs, so when the governor announces different grant programs through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCEO, or the Illinois Office of Tourism, we work with our partners to make sure that any of those grants become available to some of your partners here, so more to come on that. We're also very invested in research, so we are able to help our hotels track some of their visitation. And you'll see in a couple of minutes, I have some other stats here, but you can see on the bottom with the, what looks like my heart, my heart rate. I'm going to get over here for just a second so you can see a little bit better. Right through here is when, I'll go back, is when the bowling tournament started coming, so you can see the spikes. In addition, we used to be a very conference-heavy week where we mimicked Chicago's stay patterns. So Monday through Thursday, we were very, very busy. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, not so much. But you can see that's turned around. We're actually really busy on, on Saturdays. Lot of weddings, lot of reunions, people that had pent-up demand and that are finally getting together again. So this is some of the data that we're able to show. And then we can also show where the origination of where people are visiting. Same kind of thing for the Doubletree. We work really closely with our hotels on occupancy data, so we're, we're kind of looked at as their partner in research, so we can help them with that. In addition, I went to the county board when the ARPA dollars were being released, and everyone was so willing, and rightfully so, helping our, our restaurants and small businesses. But the hotels really weren't qualifying for any of the rescue help that was out there. They all, I think many people think that Hilton or Hyatt or Marriott is who owns them, and that's not the case at all. They might have that flag, but they're owned by a small business, sometimes a portfolio, but sometimes it's three or four hotels that they have in their portfolio. So after 18 months of working with the county board, I was able to get a hotel relief program going. We've been working very hard to get all of our hotels to apply for that. It will allow for $112 per room, which is not a substantial amount of money, but for Wood Dale, it's $34,384. It's a start. Secondly, what's going to come down the pipeline in January is the Illinois Hotel and Lodging Association. The state was able to get $75 million to help our hotels. So between those two programs, if we kind of really ready the pipeline for them, hopefully, it'll be an easier process for the state and for the hotel association to get those grant applications in. I'm happy to say both hotels have applied, so that's great news. The reason I'm talking about sports again for just a second, we really work hard on getting PR for the county. This was an event that we hosted in December, yes, December, outside freezing. We converted Cantini's golf course to a cycling course. So we got a lot of press on that. It's almost like a warrior, I can't think what the, the name is here, but obstacle course of cycling, I guess is the best way. There's sand pits, and you have to pick up your bike and run through the sand pits. This generated huge attention. It's one of the first times we've done it. It was all hands on deck. It was freezing. Tents blew over on a Friday. We were there at 5 o'clock in the morning. We are boots-on-the-ground team. You can see a lot of the, the press we got, but more importantly, data. That's why we did this. So rather than me get away from the microphone, the red area, yes, you see there was a lot of Chicagoland, Illinois folks that were at cyclocross, but you can also see Colorado, Denver, Colorado Springs. Can also see the East Coast, also Seattle and Washington State was well represented. And all of those people had $8,000 bicycles, three. Many of them stayed in our hotels and had to lock up those, those expensive bicycles. It was quite a sight. And then the bottom area, half an hour after the, the race on Saturday, there was still a race on Sunday, we were able to capture some of the visitors that traveled throughout the entire DuPage County area. Those blue dots represent just a handful of people. So when we talk about regional tourism, this is exactly what we're saying. We're a bigger bureau. We have a lot of hotel rooms, and we can bring big tournaments like this in. Everybody's a winner. So this is some of the information that I can help our hotels with and any of the events that happen in the city of Wood Dale. So happy to work with the team on this. I think I, I'm wrapping up my time here, but again, we really help in advocacy. I'm on the Legislative Committee for our state association. I'm on the Executive Board for the state association. I'm also very involved. I'm the treasurer of our Chicagoland Tourism Bureau, bureaus together. So we go down to Springfield, and just like DuPage mayors and managers, we're down trying to make sure that tourism is not left out of the conversation. We also go to Washington, DC once a year. I haven't been since before COVID, but talking to our Congress and senators to make sure that they understand we need to make sure that we're welcoming the visitors in a safe and responsible fashion, and that some of our airports do need some expansion and some different things that make it more visitor-friendly. I talked about the grants already. Anytime we have DuPage grants, we were able to get the information out, so we're kind of the conduit to all of this information. And I'm going to leave you with one voice. So again, when, when you go to a trade show, like our sales team does, you know, if you're, if you represent four hotels and you're with a meeting planner and you're saying, here's my four hotels, do you want to talk to that person, or would you like to talk to the sales manager that says, I have 110 hotels in my portfolio, you know, what, what are you needing? What dates are you needing? And we'll send the lead out on your behalf for you. So we have a lot of success. We have hundreds of years of combined tourism experience in my office. And yeah, with one voice, I think we're, we're doing better with a regional approach than individuals. It's a very competitive world out there, so we're competing with Expedia, Travelocity, Booking.com. So we have to make sure that we're out there trying to book business with our meeting planners and rights holders. And the last thing I wanted to, to talk about was our, our, our sports commission. Our, I think I showed you that picture, and maybe you saw the really tall man there at the Ryder, or the President's Cup. Igor is our European basketball player. He came to us with, from Marriott, and his vision is to bring the national spotlight on DuPage County. So we actually have USA Water Polo coming in November. We have USA Swimming. We actually hosted TYR Swimming with Katie Ledecky and a bunch of Olympics swimmers. So that's the caliber of what we're trying to accomplish here in DuPage with, you know, of course, youth, and of course, great, you know, youth programs, but also that really high-level caliber as well. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions. I did want to leave. I do have visitors' guides at the table, and I also am leaving, I talked about that cyclocross event, oops. We do economic impact reports. I always like people to listen and, and look at my PowerPoint, but feel free to look at this after the meeting. I'm happy to answer questions if you see this, but a lot of this information is in there. We've done this for the BMW and for the FedEx. For any of the bigger tournaments, we will actually do a printed piece because we think it's important to talk about the value of tourism, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions? And thank you for the hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Delighted Wood Dale's working with us.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Murmurs? Next, if no objections, I have eight items on the consent agenda. Any objections? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the eight items.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
And that passes. Now, we need a motion to approve the items. Item one, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Jensen's Heating and Plumbing Incorporated for the City Hall HVAC project in an amount not to exceed $42,850. Item number two, a resolution approving purchase agreements between the city of Wood Dale and Landmark Sign Group for purchase and installation of city wayfinding and entryway signage in an amount not to exceed $50,421. Item number three, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Superior Road Striping Incorporated for 2022 pavement marking program in an amount not to exceed $29,365. Item number four, resolution approving agreement between the city of Wood Dale and corrective asphalt materials for pavement preventative maintenance in an amount not to exceed $32,883. Item number five, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Crown Industries Limited for the Public Works Fuel Tank Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $27,969. Item number six, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Globe Construction Incorporated for the fiscal year 2023 sidewalk replacement program in an amount not to exceed $49,992. Item number seven, a resolution approving a purchase agreement between the city of Wood Dale and IT Savvy for the Mondo Board project at City Hall and Public Works in an amount not to exceed $23,200. Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County and the city of Wood Dale for the conveyance of property pursuant to an agreement for land exchange. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports. Public Works, Alderman Currielli.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item, a resolution to approve the contract with H&amp;H Electric for the fiscal year 2023 streetlight installation project in an amount not to exceed $207,841.59. I think Director Lang has some remarks.
Is that your motion?
Oh, no.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had budgeted approximately $160,000 for this project, and as you can see, biz came in there roughly $50,000 higher than we were anticipating, so it's our recommendation that we award the full contract amount, and we'll work with the contractor to phase the work over the next two fiscal years, completing Gilbert Drive and Irman Drive this year, so it fits under that $160,000 budget line, and then completing Murray Drive after May 1, so it falls in the new fiscal year. And if the council wants to continue with budgeting approximately $100,000 in streetlight replacement, we can identify another location and bring that back next year as well.
Any other questions on this? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
And that passes. Does that conclude your report? Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Mayor. Thank you. Under other business, airport noise and stormwater, nothing at this time. Approval of list of bills, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I have two. First, I have to entertain a motion to approve a list of bills for September 15, 2022 for That is my motion.
Second. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I know Brad's not here. On page 184, the gas bill for 1,041 on Royal Oaks, what is that again?
The lighting.
Is it the lighting?
Yes, streetlights.
So, the gas, did the gas go up, or is?
I'm sure it went up everywhere.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
And that passes. That passes.
And next, a list of bills for October 6, 2022 for $995,301.26. That is my motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Any questions on these? Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
And that passes. We do have one other item. Mr. Murmurs, can you just read off the CP Rail Kansas, because I believe it's coming up October 14?
Sure. For those of you at home that, that haven't heard yet, there is a merger of two Class 1 railroads in the United States proposed to go right through Wood Dale on our rail line. It is going to be very problematic for us, so it's important that you voice your concerns to your legislators and find out more about this project. You can go to www.stopcpkc.com and learn all about the project and the negative impact that will have on not only Wood Dale, but most of DuPage County and the Chicago metropolitan area. It is very important that you inform yourself on this and oppose this rail merger.
And just so the residents understand, right now, we have three freight trains a day. They're saying could be about eight more per day, so 11. It's really going to be closer to 17 and 18. Plus metro, correct. So, any help, please, voice your opinion. Okay, next, we do need to adjourn into executive session for land disposition.